Now we're ready.
Okay. All right. Hey, I would like to welcome everybody to Idaho Springs Monday, October ninth, twenty twenty three. Senate Council's work session. We just have three items on the work session. I would like to announce that Idaho Springs was just voted best main street in Colorado. So that was a wonderful, wonderful achievement for us because there is a lot of very good coverage. Well, we have three things and we'll start off with police station programming. And we have Ted with us, who's architect on that job and of course Chief Music as well. So Ted, take the lead.
Thank you. And really a pleasure being here. Thanks for inviting me. And I guess tonight, where we want to start with this, do we want to go through generally the program as to how big is it if you know or how we came to actually. So footprints extending forward to the police station or any else chief would like to share with us?
Um, I think if everyone had a chance to read my staff report, I just want to say and emphasize the importance of this project in the city. I couldn't convey that enough as far as it's really right in a very visible part of town. When I'm in that building, I'm amazed. I just saw the bus, the roundabout bus go by. And so I'm like, ADA, climbing, rapping, people are going by. And there's people that go by that that corner constantly. And it's really kind of a bookend of the story. So I think I conveyed that. I'd like to, I'd like Ted really to talk about our sessions. We did an all day session where we met with every single employee in the city and also started with the mayor and Andy. And then we had a follow up that lasted probably double what we had actually scheduled. It was two, three hours. So, and that led us to where we are today as far as what, what we're looking for and what the needs are. And I think Ted, Ted can explain really trying to do a program to make sure that we're prepared for the next ten years. The designs, you don't do something now and then in a month, you don't have space to offer. So that's, that's a big part of it. So you're okay with.
Right? You want me to share a screen with this voice though?
Yeah, you're ready to go.
Right? What were the one questions? That's small. I think we should be able to see. Yeah, looking to see what's coming up. I think I will be with this. There we are. So now, uh, what you're looking at on the screen right now is a summary with some update if you know what we did about a week ago. After a second workshop, it was held with Mayor, Andy and Chief to just check some of his footprints and how he arrived at his footprints. And all of them made what will fit within just a building. As the chief said, it's really important to get, I think, the stakeholders and the users that are fully involved. That was very early, you know, important and abstract things. It's, it's about numbers, but it's also to hear what each, what the officers have to say, the sergeants have to say. And understand operations and what they think is needed so that we're not just using boilerplate expertise. So what we're looking at on here, and I'll kind of zoom in a little bit more. Can everybody clearly see what we've got here? Yeah. So each department gets a code. So we have a code in this department here listed as police, which is the largest departments, including the head for the building. There's also a community department. Labeling this department, that's going to be the community space. Information technology, IT, building support, that has things like the lobby or any, any other support area for the building, finally the building operation. So in terms of these, we come up with an internal space just for the department itself in the building, a little over two thousand square feet. Then what we have after that are listings here for the community space, which we put in one hundred fifty square feet for our community room and some auxiliary storage or a little bit of space to support the toilet for the public. The information technology space is really nothing more than a car, is what we keep in mind. So thirty square feet. Building support includes like main lobby, if we wanted to have a little vending area, you see it zeroed out, but that came to two hundred eighty eight feet. And the operational support for the building, a lot of the actual mechanical, electrical systems and so on, we either open the ceiling or in a very small space that would be existing. So a hundred square feet for that. Let's scroll down, let's pull down just a little bit and explain then what we do. So what, what that tells us is that's roughly three thousand square feet of departmental space. Then we use a multiplier that allows for the space to be between each department. That makes sense. So I've got these blocks in the building, then I need to circulate these departments. Largely, the plan will be an open floor plan. Police officers' space will be work area. That connecting to where they get to the kitchen break room area over to the chief's office, a lot of this will be more open. So you don't get a lot of walls. So we don't need a lot of additional square feet. But that brings to a little over thirty five hundred square feet by formula as you go up. It's open. If it would help, I could go through each one of the things, Mayor, what do you think is needed?
I, I think, I think council is probably satisfied with this nearly finished. It was very well outlined in the act as to how we came up with, you know, the square footage of the offices and things like that. I think that's good.
So what I would, I could do at this point is if we think, think we're fine with how the program came about and the numbers, we could then go to a markup time itself. Ted, what did you want to add? Okay, page wise, you're gonna want to go right there. Go to the first plan that you actually see. Right where you. There's a site plan there?
Yep. There we go. Now.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the plan you're looking at here is actually taking, this is a scan from the city white bank, two thousand five. It was a renovation efficient, we put a tower out, that tower, the tower, the X five, this type of thing. So that plan is actually not an up to date current plan for the site. Typically, you want to get one, so we don't have to do anything. So this is based on a scan of that set block. So what you're looking at here is Colorado Boulevard to the top, the bottom. It indicates this minor street, but I thought that was really the other side, sorry. But nevertheless, that will be the street to the south. And then the connecting, the street that goes between the two on the right hand side. And then on this left side would be the bikini mall, I think you're all familiar with. It is really fairly tall and sets a true barrier to residents toward the park. So before I zoom in, just basically we've got parking, existing parking, nothing to came into that. Right here where my little cursor is, my spy glass. If you look at that, that's the trash collection right there. And then in dash lines, these little dotted dash lines on the sidewalks bring you to the front end. What I'm gonna do is zoom in, just to leave that here. And what we're looking at, and this, this is really again from the program and working with all the different staff and users for this, this building basically. Let's just go to the left. On the left hand side, what we're looking at doing is coming in off of Colorado Street, Oklahoma, sorry. And entering into what could be the home and enclose former bank life. If you've seen the building, that dash line you're looking at is the roof overhead. And the good news is since all the roof is there, we can just put in a foundation with a wall to infill below. So you get a lot of value out of that, and it's all we got, really. So why not build more out of it? And this becomes a day of assembly work for the police. The idea, if they could drive through on the west lane, that lane would stay there, but we probably will elevate that path. We've got some range issues that we'll want to reverse the way it ranges currently because it flows toward minors. But we don't really want that happening inside the block. And then on the right side lane, which is east, some of that will be permanent where, where in custom, you're not into the building, correct? And you would do some liberate booking or something to get out of the building before you bring it into.
So one of the processes that. Well, I was gonna play an example of when we take people to the police department. So there's been times that I've come to work and I, I get there and there's a drunk person sitting outside of my office. And we are waiting to do a blood draw with an ambulance. It's the first time they've had it DUI. And that, that's my specific example of taking people to the police department. And it's not really number one time to be safe. And not only, we also offer that to CSP. So all of the people that have been there when I've gotten there, our officers have been there when I've gotten there. People to, to basically process it through and have a sober person come pick them up. Yeah, first time DUI, they're cooperative. We can book them and release them. Again, all sorts of chances are varied, but that has happened. And the other thing that I would like us to look at is in agencies, currently when we arrest people on a city warrant. Okay, so we failed to appear at city court and now we have a city warrant. Our officers spend time arresting someone here and driving towards town, process them. And then they're immediately released because they're an OR bomb. And now we're driving typically, we're driving the suspect back, depending upon if they're, you got people say, well, I'm gonna lose my job. Okay, fine, cooperate, I'll, I'll take you down there, I'll process you and I'm gonna drag you back. So we're giving people a ride down and back when we do this project and process them in the police departments. This would include us getting a digital fingerprint machine. That's one of the things that I would, I would really want us to go for versus ACH. Because we currently have ACH, we only have a couple of officers who know how to do that. So we need to move beyond ACH, which is a nineteen seventies or eighties type thing. If you go to a digital fingerprint. And then we could process people and we wouldn't have to leave the city. So we want to be able to do that in a, in a safe environment. So that's, that's where having that, and then the other benefit would be if you did have a crime where we moved it temporarily stored and able to process it for evidence. And that's where that would temporarily store it because it would be a secure location and it would be out of the weather instead of having to call duty, take it to the garage, you know what I mean? And I know you do it. No, I know you would, one hour. So my point is, is that we should have that if we need to and process that. So that's, that's where I'm going with that. And that's why you need it. Now, this is not a jail and this is not a whole, like a, like we're holding people for twenty four hours situation. This is just a temporary, we're, we're processing and they're going out for, they're going to jail and they're going to jail. So, so hopefully that kind of explains what the reason as to why we do that versus try to work down one hundred percent.
But I, my question is, chief, that, so the, where the, where the drive through is currently, right? That, so would it be like covered on both ends with, with garage door access? And then, because there's a door to the, to your bank right there. And then inside, would there be like, uh, from, from that door? Like, would there be a.
A way to get into the building?
No, no, I, there's, there's way in the building, of course, what, you know, it, it, I don't, is that?
The door is actually further.
It's further, yeah.
Could we go to four plan at a moment?
Sure.
Is that?
I have a four plan that you can go through the moment if you like.
Well, I was just wondering if, I mean, that, that would be utilized in my community closure, where just like you said, chief, Ted. If, you know, if you had that and then you had a suspect or whatever, that that door would access like a private, more private area to get into the side of the building area.
Or if you can build in security features so that prisoners, that's what they are, they're processing that way, that they're basically contained, meaning. Getting into the next four.
Right.
Would be a process they wouldn't have access to.
That's the only, I mean, I think the building is super cool for the, like, the safety and the, the, you know, the security of, of, of the outside. Versus you guys in public, you're upright, it's a, hey. You guys have the baddest ass, but whatever storage there is, you put behind the door that's that thick, I mean.
Right.
You know?
That's definitely a benefit of.
Yeah, exactly. It's not your garage with.
You know, wooden lockers.
Right? Yeah. I think it's cool, right?
So, yeah, so that's why Ted's basically recommending that, especially for, as far as paying for your block is already structured there. So potentially enclosing that, whether there's gonna be a drive to garage to go through, straight through, or just one, you have to back up or we'll have to go through that.
Yeah. A drive in and out, I mean, it's time of constructing that your, and the chief could just put a door on there and then, you know, drive in and back out. Yeah, I think that's, that's a great idea. That's what I was.
She just, you know, you're also saying that we need to pick somebody up to Georgetown and then you have to wait and bring them back up. That's one less officer in town providing coverage. So I mean, whatever, whatever else is going on, that's the bottom line.
We're not losing coverage. We've witnessed coverage yet for the four hours or, or whatever it takes. Yeah.
For sure. It's usually anywhere from an hour to two hours, depending on the process.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. Would you like to? Yeah, sure. I just want to kind of talk about that.
Sure.
The, the importance of that or why that, that was sort of the reason. Because I think sometimes council, you know, doesn't necessarily understand all the processes going on in the, the justice system and that's sort of the way it's working.
So what I'm here to show tonight is just basically two diagrams. First, site report, which we first. So let's just speak to the parking, I think it's on the north side, closing Colorado Boulevard. So these, uh, I forgot how many I've got here now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven spaces. Generally speaking, they stay the way they are. And what we're looking at is for police parking, we talked this over to you and I, where we would look at maybe using all, there's a big concrete, if you notice this on that quarter. Use that for police parking and they could in fact park vehicles all anywhere they wanted here. This lane here stays open so that a vehicle can bypass the assembly park and it would be at least three or four or ten square feet. That's what we're hoping to do. So just to grant you to the site at large. What we're now looking also for space to make this, I think, the square footage, the number of work. These sort of blue turquoise colored elements on the right hand side. Well, this is where the current bank entry takes place. And again, all of this is under O, but there are these little triangular shaped spaces. And they really kind of complicate the internal workings. And if we're looking to rearrange the interior building, we think that if we were to frame all that out in a red paint, it'll actually benefit not only the entrance, but what also will be adjacent to the interior. That'll pick us, pick up some square footage for us. And then this part, same story, the roof passes out over this corner that they diagonally cut through. They thought back when this was originally designed, I'm not sure what they think that was. They liked the idea of this kind of cut through, you know, through the sidewalk. So we see this helping us to interior arrangements all on the roof. They put in a small foundation for the wall and move the inside of it. So that's the idea of the overall site. And if you're good with that at this point, maybe we could go to the floor plan. And I'll just show you a general diurematic layout here tonight of what we'll be working with on the inside of the building. It's in your package. So here's your existing parking up top. The drive through color lanes as it currently exists, and we explain how the police would pass through. So internally, again, let's go back to the salad board as it's called, it would be called. This lane would be ideally the drive through for the police. And the idea currently is that you would drive through continuing on out to minor. It's possible that you might decide not to have the drive through. This becomes more of a collective space for the police. They would back out of the drive, back up and turn around on site and go nose first back out of the corridor. We, we haven't closed the door on either option, so we want you to know that. So internally, to answer your questions, was it Jim?
Yes, sir.
Jim, right here is where I would zoom in, where currently this is the drive up, drive through, and this is where the color stations are. So bottom line is it's all glass and any part of this, we can open up into the doorway. So there's, there's kind of a stone block, you know, on the face, probably will be the roof. And we'll figure out with dollars, you know, how much we can actually change or we're just gonna have to fit, you know, one of the, the budget. But the idea is that this zone is up for grabs, right? That we can remodel all this zone. I'll just quickly orientate through the rest. Here's that big vault, the door you mentioned, Jim, just a moment ago. But everything else is going to be taken and torn out except. This existing service board, this is where all your plumbing is, the primary electrical, your HVAC and controls are all back in this corner. So we think if we want to try to leave that to most of where it is, we may have to reshape it a little, there may be some new. We may have to reshape it a little, there may be some new road demand for that. But we think that's a planning element, that it stays where it is. And then here are the two east side expansions, expanding this entrance right here. If you will, sparing up the entry to get in. And then this, this extension would allow the interior space a little more rectangular. Maybe a bit more efficient. And we set at this conference in right corner here, even with just six of us in there, it got a little snug. So by extending that corner, we can capture a nice trundle space and free up this configuration that could make it a lot more efficient. And you really do want to get, I haven't put it in there, but a community space up here that wants to be somewhere near this front door. So there could be a bypass that would come in the community road, but not into the police operations, which was this. So that's the overview. And I'll stop at that point and uh, let's have a little. And real quick, so what I'm envisioning with this community might be a, it's really common in, in. I don't know, in other government buildings, it's become a, a common thing so that if people need a meeting place, I know I know Springs has a number of meeting places. But I mean, if people need a meeting place, we can accommodate twenty people. Um, whether it's, you know, uh, whether, I'll throw it out there like an AA meeting or any sort of meeting or any public meeting. That, that would be open to the public, yeah. And then obviously, we don't have a training room, a training, training area, which is really critical for us. And um, training is really what keeps us on this grid narrow, keeps officers prepared to deal with the things you deal with. And so when not needing that other capacity, really having a training room where we can gather and uh, post-training, put on training. Will be beneficial, or, or favorite council needs that, be more public. Potentially, but this room is much larger than what that, the tall will be.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, but, but I typically, we can have these rooms where they're off of a lobby. You still can lock the door during the day, so you don't have to keep going in and out, you know, unsupervised. But certainly after hours, you can come up with a, a, a way to, to have, you know, a trusted member. Monitor a meeting and then, you know, turn in, you know, turn, do that. And they still wouldn't have access to the rest of the building, like, or even flat access to the rest of it.
Oh, you're good.
Or electronic, or there's all kinds of uh, things.
That's it, alright. Are you thinking just like closing off the, where the current drive through is now? I mean, if you're trying to shut it down on, onto that furthest west, you know, west lane. To there, there would still be, or, or, or you could uh, through to that wall. To the west where, I mean, that, that would still be, I mean, five parking spots for police vehicles or something.
You have a number of space.
Sure, I think, but is that, is that included in here to keep that open, is that this?
That's our thinking.
That's fine, there, okay.
Allows, it allows, if, uh, uh, there's a. Support vehicle, if we need to.
That, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
They, they can bypass vehicle solid port, police operations.
Right, that, that's what I was thinking, if that was gonna go, that, that enclosed storage.
It's narrow, but it currently works that way, right? You can drive through that. And really, I think what we're essentially, we, yeah, all they found, we start to talk and look at it, but it's, it's really. You're having that, that side of the building, that, that, the west side is pretty much the way, kind of the way Paul was putting those parking. But now that it's gated, so that that area is just accessible for parking for, for police. Um, not everybody takes the, the, uh, certainly we do lose, uh, Doc mentioned, we will lose garage. We don't have no garage necessarily, storage vehicles. Um, but that's, that's, again, I almost wrote, that's a bit of a luxury. Most communities don't necessarily have the garage. Um, but we are fortunate that our number of people can take their cars home. Uh, but I think the other, the other point is, is that. On this di, on this diagram here, which is expand police operations, that, or that's the space where we consider. Being after all that loss, if it is probably grow, that's where we potentially expand the building itself. And I will add in a future phase, you could, if you can see my cursor on the screen, you could move over this area if you wanted.
I think that's, that's, and I think Q door is one.
We, we don't know that you can, it just depends on how much budget you can, you know, press into this project. But yes, you could move over this area. It seems like on that site, that means, just in space, in addition to, like, on the north side of the building. That is, that is another thing, another area that was possible, that's a bit, you know. Yeah, well, let's just quickly jump into that. We, we think that potentially with the internal arrangements, as you saw, that you have the ability to expand out here on the east side. And on that north side, there is a big concrete that we can come down, it may be controversial, but uh, it's paying over roof now and the roof's just a bit. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I think to Q door, you are at the. On the garage is way, way, way smarter than pulling it back out.
That solid board is driven middle and, and, well, that we can live with. Well, let me, let me just, Nate and I were just over at the site, Chief.
Oh, okay.
Before I call you Nate. Nate and I worked together years ago, I'm a giant, by the way, on their public services. Um, right here, that I, and what's happening, the arrows are kind of telling. The water flows through the, which was a good thing, right, for the dam. It's not a good thing for us, so likely we're gonna have to uh, elevate the slab and match the floor line here, which is about six inches. And then we've got room enough to taper it, you know, back out to this point, right out here where there's a drainage channel, that goes right through there. So we've got plenty of room that we can slope movement and make sure that water is going in the opposite direction. However, on this side, in the part of the urban economy. On this side, we'll wanna let that water continue, it's more global natural course, uh, slowly pour itself.
Though we see more streamlined now for evidence, so you can just put on the little thing, push the button, send it right in and then. Right, I mean, there are gonna be one of those, wouldn't that be, you know, it's coming to.
But one of the great comments that we know is, we really don't wanna get anywhere near the footing of that material. It's a, it's a massive wall. Oh, and the last thing we wanna do is to do anything to cause the neighbor next door, get a new house, I would do it.
Yeah, right.
So, we're, we're thinking about this. So the roof actually overhangs a little further, if need be, if money allows, we could actually cut off that roof. And you'd see where it overhangs right here. So that's really an unmutated bit of roof, so we, spending the dollars, we could do it.
So I like the idea of extending and adding that extra area, it makes sense. It might have been just decorative at that point in time of nineteen seventies, something weird, but um, the uh, the, the new entrance. So the, the community room and the police station are going to share the same entrance?
We can do it like, like a forty-four hour uh, like lobby.
Okay.
And you can just eat, you know. But you can't do it.
But you can't get it.
But you can't, okay, cool. And then that's gonna be, I imagine, some sort of security system for you guys in there.
It'd be like an airlock into some.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's curious, is that big enough? Cause I can't really tell how big that spaces is.
Notice right here, this, where it's angled currently.
Yeah.
That's your current airlock. So where I draw the line is showing me a bill, additional added piece. So this, this airlock could be the same depth again.
Okay.
Right, so you might have.
How big? I don't know, that doesn't, I mean, I'm just curious how big it is.
We typically like to get three foot straps between the doors.
Okay.
So just get moved to the south with the door then, is that what you're saying?
And we haven't really studied it yet, oh, and not a possibility.
Right.
But as you know, airlocks are not effective if they're two posts together. You've got the in, inside door, the out.
Long arms.
Under a nice glass of frigging cold air, so nobody likes that.
Apparently that building has a lot of glass, I think some of the glass holes for the floor to seal, don't think. It's probably changing the floor plan inside, or you're trying to use that.
We'll, we'll basically demo out all the partitions or non-load bearing partitions. And then we'll look at what we need to do in the service core area. But we're gonna, we, we're gonna basically get rid of this exterior wall right there. I'm, I'm trying to say, I just wanted to, Jim. That would be the only load bearing partition that we're moving, right here. Oh, that's not even a load bearing wall.
Oh, that isn't.
No, because the wall, the roof itself is suspended or carrying along the structure above. So I, I guess, I'm, I'm wondering then about the rest of the interior, are, are, is any of that moving? We don't think so, but I haven't, we gotta, we gotta get a, a set of uh, plans and.
Got you.
Cause I looked up there and there was some impressive uh, beams that were constructed to stand the roof to that building. We, we don't really know that. Okay, it'll take part of the services that we'll get into the design and it will be, be, do an actual onsite survey, the structural here. Uh, we, we wanna get a, can't win sooner, we'll get to that in a moment, so just look at the current system. But when we get into design, we'd have to bring the new material.
Just let you guys be safe and.
For, I think the last piece is that Scott brought up, this glass on the interior walls. Uh, you know, I think once we get to actually um, the planning stage, which is the next stage, where we actually talk about where things would probably fall into place. Ted talked about things that anchor the building, like where the, you don't wanna move water, right? So that's why that, that's gonna stay and why the ball's gonna stay a little deep. One of the things that we, part of that, we've been considering that, that, that really, I, I guess, I would guess sort of the community room part of it, likely be where. You know, there's likely more, a lot more glass on that side. And that, which would be. Is the east side of the, more public or lobby of view inside. And then the, the more secure areas would be likely further centered to the left. We will want a historic presentation of new, except for the view. It doesn't mean we need to afford sooner that. In fact, I would suggest this, this contemporary building doesn't really have much historic content.
No, that's a, not, not a good one.
So we're not looking to do the kind of contemporary classes and everything. Um, we're gonna wanna look at minor alterations that have an existing structure, but also move in the right direction if we know. That we think could be more appropriate uh, to a building, it's kind of a gateway, you know, into this building. How much can we really do? Probably not a lot, because we, we really don't want to, unless we budget for it, we don't wanna do much to this exterior. If we want to do more exterior, then we can. It's, it's all about how aggressive we wanna be in shaping and making of this building. Ted, I think it's pretty accepted by the D M, uh, I mean, it's been there for decades. And really, I think the bank, when it was in operation, did themselves uh, uh, really a good service by, it's always been tough up. You know, it has never been a, an eyesore or, you know, a point of controversy, so. I uh, you know, I, I, I don't see really that need for a period. Other, you may end up with different vendors that are doing it, so, you know, depending on the layout of the building. I think that, you know, the bank keep that power, it's kind of.
They're calling it a mining.
Yeah, I, I, it's extent, or excuse me, I mean, you could go either way with that. Uh, and, and what to do about that, well, we'll have some fun, we'll, we'll watch it for a bit, you know, but. We do wanna spend a little bit of money in this area to make the addition a uh, if you will. Something that probably is going to be a little more compatible, except for the, those triangles that come out.
Yes.
I saw too, are just to me, uh, points of space, they don't really fit. Do you, I mean, um, I'm, 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 I'm just up above the screen, uh, like, there's that, there was a gas station.
Wow, so. I was just asking.
Who are those walls still in place? One of them, if it, if it had ever hung in court, that it was not.
And, no, and who?
I didn't, I don't see any, I saw a part of it.
And who, was there a, was there a, a sanction of the, the purchase on that for? You know, ninety-nine year or whatever it was, full contamination or even? That on the purchase of that, is that ever in the contract that? I was, I was wondering about that, since it's that, was that, that was?
When you bought the building.
Right. Was, was that?
Phase one environment. Yeah, I believe, I actually, I believe when the bank is, uh, yeah, the bank is done up.
But it, it doesn't transfer over to another one. Just wondering, I mean, not to the matter, I think the bank on, on it.
So it was, yes, that was a restaurant.
I know, I had a lot of fried rice at a, yeah.
It was a bank.
That's not true, I hope.
Yes, yes, it was a bank and a restaurant, went back to next.
Yep.
Maybe so.
That's one move.
Sorry, no, we.
There you go, now, he needs, yes.
And I'm sorry, but if anybody wants to see the original gas station, if it's there.
All you have to do is watch.
No, check, check out the movie. Check out the movie, uh, Robert Redford, uh, Downtown.
That's right.
Yeah, started up. Yeah, well, downtown's. You're at, I'm sorry. You're at, and then? Uh, no, we don't have to do that anymore. So um, with the way that everything's non-digital, we don't have to worry about that infrastructure. Give them up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a, you know, feeling? You guys have any other questions, anything? Uh, I, I guess one of the things I wanted to make sure that the council was just aware of through this process was. The specific things that were mentioned, you know, within intended and the needs, but a number of offices, sort of the space in the, in the size, so. Make it, you know, make everyone aware, if you have a question about that, or if it seems like it's, I guess, outside the norm. This is sort of that opportunity right now to address that. Cause the next stage, basically what we do is we start trying to figure out what will peacefully fit, practicing this in the structure. So that um, we'll make some extra space. Chief, I was impressed with the input because I felt these numbers were very conservative. And I felt from the input of others who are involved, it, it was really pretty conservative. You know, nobody was asking for fifteen foot offices. Okay. Well, uh, just next step, so we basically gets to move into the next phase. So if there's any, anything here that's a question or an issue that we're, whether, perhaps. Ted, I, I just saw on your timeline, you're thinking about uh, you'll, you'll be done with the design, the floor plan, if you will. And uh, when, I don't know, the strength of the floor, when we, when. Oh, well, let's go half a step before that. But the next step that we currently have the contract of is what we call space plan. What we did was space programming. And I took this one step further than we just did earlier. We keep to making this successful, is that the program doesn't exceed the boundaries of the exterior building, right? So we did get a little larger, because we were actually one of the largest, something we lived in the same, in general about. We had a little about this size for, you know, some kind of other. We actually were about a hundred fifty feet larger, a hundred foot larger. Found out that that just wasn't gonna really fit within the compliance of this revenue we're showing you. Or we're gonna have to get more aggressive, so we backed out of that. So at this point, what I wanted to do, the purpose is of posing a programming stage is just to illustrate. How we get the building for more type of change. There's no thirty four hundred square feet, right? Because there isn't currently, there's not thirty four hundred square feet in the, uh, twenty-six maybe. Yeah. We bought it, I think, on the plans, that's what it says. So we wanted that, make sure that council members all understand that uh, the actual footprint uh, and what we needed. When we went through the programming exercise for areas, it did exceed the twenty-six. When we went through the programming exercise for areas, it did exceed the twenty-six. It did get bigger than that, so that, that, I think it was, uh, we vetted the numbers by coming back to look at the shell and being pissed. In fact, the sergeants are sharing an office the size of the chief's. Right, so, pretty darn efficient, a hundred and twenty square foot office for the chief is a ten-by-twelve roof. And it's just big enough, because we have two, two, maybe three people come in, said the chief are right on, uh, conversation. The sergeants will have enough space for just maybe on each end, or.
They're gonna share it.
They're gonna share it ten by twelve, we gotta, we're gonna have to turn around, not pump it, and each other, but. Just for everybody's sake, you can look at anything like this line here, starting back corner, three piles over, each one was a four feet. So there's twelve, and then go five piles that way, because we're ten, or two feet deep. That's a ten-by-twelve office. So two people in one of them, and the chief goes. So, because we did schedule, uh, our dependent office in future, so maybe in the short term, they will still have to, probably do it, have their own office. But I see that changing in this. Ted, we have a, this, uh, we got a question.
Well, I'm glad you asked, and along those lines, I just, uh, had a dear lengthy discussion with a contractor who, uh, is very familiar with out of his thing, used to work in out of his buildings. And his company goes all over the state, uh, even off of county offices, to do this exactly same work. And I was very pleased to talk to him, because he's very familiar with the banking. And he feels that his end is not too bad. He feels that most of this will be non-load-bearing, and that, uh, a lot of the materials are fairly inexpensive, of course, as you know. There's gonna have to be some electrical drop into some of these walls, as this configuration of re-rings. But I am very confident, speaking with him, that he is going to, uh, be significantly less than the worst case scenario. But to address the, uh, the cost that we have seen with construction, is just that aside. I mean, like, all these projects we reviewed recently have come in like nearly double what anybody knows lot, and the bids, so. Ted has respectfully put this, um, on kind of a upper range of three hundred square foot on the remodel. I wouldn't be surprised if this contractor will absolutely be one of the bidders, uh, comes in significantly under that. And we also, uh, intend on pursuing grants, and as you know, our staff has really been, uh, incredible with hearing rates. So, uh.
Thirty-four.
Yeah, thirty-four.
Right, right.
So Ted has a worse, you know, kind of scenario, we're at a million and three, but, you know, he, he doesn't want to tell us one fifty, for example. Maybe we end up getting a contractor that, that wants to work with us and make that happen. But he doesn't wanna dig in his heels at a one fifty and then, you know, look terrible later, when it comes back, worst case scenario, you're gonna be hundred. I think the citizens are gonna get quite a bargain, because, uh, I think they're gonna get some grant money to help with this. And I personally feel we did, are gonna come in less than, than the three hundred, but, uh. Yeah.
Well, it's institutions and, uh, and, like, we, we've been around a lot, all enough to know that every time we under value, exactly, we too often are gnashing our teeth and hanging on by our fingernails, not have to come back and ask them, oh, my. Second, uh, we're really establishing this as a budget and saying, if you budget this amount, we'll design with, and, and if things get more expensive, what it means is, we might have to back some in now. My recommendation is based simply on the kind of middle of what low-end remodel possibility versus new construction. And so I, it's really, lack of ever was a god number, but I believe in, in using whatever the word is. And that's for the building construction only, and, and we put it somewhere for site, by the way, a lot, and a little bit for the same furniture, as you mentioned, it's a brick, not a, not a, not a, not a. Not much, very little, but it does not include what we call soft blocks, which are all designed to use planning, uh, permitting, other, other permitting. But other costs are different. One thing the Department of Local Affairs will be, if you're going after the money, they're gonna amend it, because a highly efficient facility.
Yeah.
Like, oh, they keep them, uh, there'll be, there'll be a variety of systems that we wanted to check out and look at. Cancellation, that is one of the things Mary we talked about. Where, where you can see the cost get bettered up, is if we can, if we can, if we can, like walls, and what that does to exterior, uh, envelope and roof. So that's why I'm very hesitant to be idealistic, or it's just a budget. We design, if, if you set it in that, we'll design it. But if you go after a Department of Local Affairs money, you won't have to make particularly other than USB, Building Council, their lead requirements for silver, there's certified silver, gold, and platinum, or four categories. And I haven't worked with gold in over seven years, but I've worked with the Wrangell, the Robic, and the, and the, down at the Manos, Manos County. Uh, can't remember o- other, other places within the state of Colorado. Uh, but I still, I think at a minimum, we still have to get silver. And that forces your hand on it, and so probably, I'm gonna say, probably replacing the entire mechanic system. And one of the things I recommend, to, to, to air is bringing, uh, mechanical, whatever, they're committed to funding sort of analysis, assessment of your systems, how long life do they have left to speak, and how efficient are they? I don't.
The application requires their, uh, high-performance efficiency program for buildings over five thousand square.
Oh.
So what about, okay, if there is an energy efficiency component, right, and we're gonna look at it a little bit more. But I think that we, we may avoid the size of the building, but that really, um, the high-performance.
We should look carefully, because you know, it's become much more aggressive, current government, of course, calling for that, that what we're gonna do to. Not to mention, it, it does say great things about Iron Springs. If you can say, then you did a really great job, right, of, of the efficiency. Uh, thinking, adapting, money lost there. It's a good, solid building interior, even though it sounds like it's got an interesting history, once in, uh, that the adapting it, sort of, people, the, the, offers me money. That's a, a lot. So looking tonight to get approval, I guess, just, just space, right? Just, just, just sort of, I guess, I would say, well, if you have approval, go in the space. But, but that everybody here is ready to move out of the programming, that they're satisfied with that, right? Because we still do wanna go on record that the space planning, I'm sorry, that the program, if it's true, as, as it stands, as a. Yeah, then when you, you know, and it's, is, is, is. We, I would recommend we bring in a mechanical gear, the mechanical system. Structural, electrical, I think, a little later, I'm, I'm not sure, you probably know about the current one. But if we bring in an, an, a mechanical, electrical gear, I would recommend that they look at the system. The space, even if, if this, we call it bubble, planning, being very, very alone. We're, yeah, we wanna quickly, we wanna quickly diagram where things will go. The other thing that we do with it, we cost our fee to the space. For example, service core area, the model, the retro fit, the ad is a higher dollar square foot. Oh, that's just an open office where the, the desk. Uh, this infill will be at a different dollar square foot. This front entry will be at a different dollar square foot, small circle. And government will, will, people are gonna involve and find out if the envelope is willing to have to be, uh, this, this location all about. And, you know, in the end, you say, it's considerable, considerable amount of money. I don't know how much void space there is up there, but we wanna keep the, 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 down here at the nine foot ceiling, right, not, not up there. That's where I think it, it probably knows a lot of people to go right up into that space, yeah, a lot. And so after we get towards the conclusion of the next part of this, the actual planning, when we come back and, 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 we are coming back for council for another session. If you can order, you have that, it's, it's, and then, and then, and then, yes. And that's when, when basically we're done with that part, see the, uh, side, next steps, and I think at that point, are, are we? The room we're working this now, if we have, it sounds like council's comfortable with what this document is and what it represents. And, uh, we'll come back and, um, we'll, we're the planning, the, the planning base of the now. So this, this is what we're looking to be approved, is the actual program document with the, uh, detailed pages that show the structure, how it could be used. So that's, that's the part we have to decide properly. And so you all right so far? When we come back, we're gonna have a, five, six, seven, eight, we're gonna have a, back, we do, iron out the details, and then one more time after that, we'll go to the final. All right, so this, this is called the space we're in, what, I'm permanent contract is called pre-legal. So we get the programming right, then we do, we literally just do a little diagram, show how spaces will allocate, where they are, and then we'll make sure that we're happy with how it plays out, and we'll make sure it works for you as well, especially with these spaces.
Ted, I guess, Andy, Andy, because this is a city property, this bypasses planning commission? Does, does none of this have to go before planning?
Those have to go, they, they're, so.
This project, is it gonna involve the, at this time, an addition that's bigger than fifty percent of the building? So there's not, some of our processes may be in place, um, but there are other things that we could, we could bring this project to their.
I'm, I'm not saying that you have to, I'm just, I wanna clarify, I, I think we should probably, they should get an update on the project. I know what to, yeah.
And then like site plan stuff, and things like parking and that kind of thing, we probably would want it to.
Because we're gonna change it and back to, or to, or, or, that we have.
Very, very intense.
Shouldn't.
Well, this is requiring, you're preparing for the construction, so.
I might be able to have some. On the outside, this, part of this story review, right?
Yeah, this building is not continuing structure, so it, it isn't, it's hard to structure, so it's gonna need to go through this, you know, process back. If they're not gonna, that, it's not gonna be the same, like, like a, like, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit, it's has to kind of go through the process.
So, no, it's, it's great review?
It may not be, but we have a small part of the consumption, and I don't think it's gonna need that exemption. So it may need to go through the hearing, but I think that, you know, if we have to do that, it would be, because it's not a, for our period of significance.
Council, uh, anything further? All right, Ted, thank you very, very much, we really appreciate it. Yeah, we'll take just a minute.
Hello there, where was your, this is not. Did you, you, nobody, or?
Well, I've got somebody in mind. Always, always good to hear a transition is. Find out some ways that are actually, you know, okay.
On project, uh, well, for this, it's all set, and the architect that we find is now retired, he was in the building. The last time, I don't know, it was a, last year, it was seventy-five. Yeah, we're, we're, so we're planning to work with, we, we're working on the two thousand six. You know, you know. Said things on there.
Can you do, uh, I can, I can. I've got a complaint, not lying with the bear, I got inside of the, okay, lie, lie.
All right, well, two more topics for the work session, uh, victims advocate updates.
So I was just gonna introduce, um, I'm, I'm part of the advocate board, but the board had talked about the presentation for the, the different government entities, including the D O C C, uh, Georgetown as well. And so, um, I invited the president of the board. And also, it was an opportunity for everybody to meet Don Jones, who doesn't know Don, I think, what, what we do, is, is, is a new advocate, advocate. Uh, correct, so, just, all right, sounds good, thanks, Steve. I know that Jonathan, if their presentation is on that, uh, is on the pack.
Okay. Those who might not know, we're writing against this school, and I'm a principal, but I'm here tonight. And, um, as she said, with the, in the process of shifting, as Julie Albert steps out as executive director, to celebrate her, uh, service.
Perfect, yeah, yeah. And, um, but also a chance to welcome Don. Um, and give her a chance to, uh, be seen by all of you as advocates. And also to make sure, um, because councils change, uh, but advocates, advocates are still doing the same, like, with, and just to make sure that, um, the city knows, you know, its services that, that provide so much, on, all, for, just, for, for. Would you know?
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm, I'm guessing probably everybody here is a little bit more of a fact, it's, um, if not, you, you know, we've been around since eighteen, nineteen eighty-one. Um, we're nonprofit, we're completely grant funded, um, we're governed by our board directors, again, Chris, that is, with the, with the school system. Uh, she uses it with law enforcement, we also have, uh, one time, uh, with the, uh, public support board, we have, um, two other law enforcement officers who serve on our board currently. Um, and so it's, we are the only different services in, because there are no law enforcement. So, um, sorry, now we have two offices, one in Georgetown, uh, we're based with the P A's office, and we also have an office that's on the side. We spot, respond on scene twenty-four seven, to victims of private trauma, um, mess, mess violence, sex assaults, um, any of the women's rights. We average about four hundred and fifty to five hundred clients in a day. We average about four hundred and fifty to five hundred clients in a day. We also respond to death calls, death notification calls. These are like, avatars, search and rescue. We do show up to water calls and also the structural. And we also provide education awareness with community, um, organizations, organization. We do have a mass violence support group, we assist with civil protection orders. We are, uh, we try to be the liaison between law enforcement, the DA's office and courts. Um, we can assist legal aid and we do help with young people's housing bills. Um, and then also we do assist with a private response, which is. Who just goes to the attorney's office, uh, that we can help people, people and get that all well.
I'd like to just highlight very quickly, um, because this is a community based organization and not law enforcement based. Our advocates are able to provide more services throughout the county, especially as we've got lots of tools. There's something that's criminal, that's where it's required, that some sort of advocates are there to support. But, uh, Don and the volunteers that we have are also responding to non-people. Such as suicides and suicide. So that's some additional support that are being conceded.
So some of the other programs we do, um, if you, if you come to Santa Shop. So there's about two hundred families that we help at Christmas. Make sure that we can get everything's Christmas, there's, we actually do it. Um, we also were part of creating your support team. So right now we have, we established that in twenty twenty one. And we have representation from Idaho's principles department, the sheriff's office. Uh, the coroner's office, the advocates, fire and violence. And so we all kind of work together to make sure that we're helping all of our first responders as much as we possibly can. Kind of, you know, navigating confinement road act with a lot of policy issues. So, um, again, I did say we have a support group. So we are grant funded, um, our four grants are through, um, Department of Civil Justice. The most violence program, the local bail, which is. And, and we also do get some DOLAs and. We can get corporate contributions, um, maybe some fundraising and other unrestricted. Unfortunately, we are not like some of the other counties in the state that have huge corporations. Or huge organizations that we, we donate to. So we're a little bit more restricted. But we do, we can get some funding, we can get some donations from, for some grants from Freeport. Um, uh, Team Evergreen and Elcomar. And. What's that? And. And Alan. And Alan. Um, so our budget is normally about two twenty to two sixteen. Um, but our expenses are continuing to rise just because times become more upward. These cell situations and the escalation of the violence is increasing, which is causing us to, um. Be involved with our victims for longer. The use. So in our this capturing, all that applicants for everyone. We have a great group advocates, but as everybody knows, volunteering is not really popular anymore. So we've got some great volunteers, um, so we, we want to.
And if anybody knows.
Yes.
That once the volunteering is qualified, you know, you'd love to have.
That's a good point, that was awesome.
Absolutely.
So one of the volunteers saying is, like, this that's sometimes on call to go to the system.
Yeah. Um, and you know, as you mentioned, this that's, that's something that. Changes, that's something that.
So touch on that Scott, so for twenty twenty two, it's on on-call hours sixty six. Um, our volunteers covered twenty six fifteen and staff covered four thousand sixty five, which is about ninety five hours short of two full hours. We do have, we do have a per where we have the five hundred call. So that's the advocates that over a year's period, they have a million five hundred hours. We have three advocates in twenty twenty two that hit that. Um, we already, for twenty twenty three, we already got two and that's pretty more than. So they are, they are huge. Um, last year we, our primary and secondary victims were four hundred and seventy seven. As of the second quarter of this year, we are. So, and again, DV is one of our biggest, is one of our largest at a hundred and twenty seven for last year. Then felon motions, deaths, avalanches, and structural fires, we write hundreds of systems. So we kind of run the gamut on just different places we have gone out.
Don is not bored yet. Don is not bored.
No, no.
I, I gotta tell you, our advocates and the hours they all, they get practice in the hybrid class. Where do you get volunteers to spend four hours, nineteen weeks for eight weeks? Um, so they get a hybrid here, we go online, take some reports and then. And then the person part of the doors, they actually do. They had those needs. And the, we got two, two brand new media advocates, five officers. There are a lot of. They're right in the, the community they have. They have, they pay attention to them. Be a volunteer, all you gotta do is have.
Um, so we just kind of, we're part of different organizations, we're part of the start team, which is the, uh. Sexual assault response team, that's the, it's traditional. Um, that we recently started talk, uh, kind of trying to collaborate with the chat team. Um, we've been on bail boards, the perfect child detention unit committee. We do go to back to school night at the high school. Uh, you, you're involved with that youth network, the health staff. Uh, last year we did, uh, two predominant dresser trains, the law enforcement. These regulations, forensic nurse, exam, examination. A new investigation, the track. Our peer support did, uh, several classes, a loyalty class, a giving rewards class, get uncomfortable class. And beyond the bench. And so again, we support group, I don't, I don't know that. Uh, we also do provide, um, for law enforcement. Uh, fire EMS, public health. We created a card, uh, it's got a QR code on it, it just says, yeah. That's for, if somebody goes, if, if fire EMS go on all, or kind of things, maybe a little bit, even not. They don't want to say anything due to watching how the situation is put out. They can hand that card to someone, doesn't give them any indication of card. Where, where the card is going to be, be sent directly to our, to our services. That's good. So, uh, and it's part of the reason we do that is so that everybody, you know, everybody's kind of paying attention and they want us to see them. I don't, also we will make sure that.
What, and so what was that?
The, the QR codes, we've not given them as many, but we.
I mean, that's a pause.
Doesn't necessarily.
Yeah, no, Don.
So at the library. And that is, and, and anything, and that's part of it too, we wanna get, wanna get those out to anybody who's actually, you know, feels. Give those to somebody who's in need. And part of the reason that they don't have any identifying information is because if, if they're in a bad situation. Then you've essentially handed them what could be in a worse situation, so it wasn't like that. So yeah, no, I think the library is a good place to. And then I think thank you to Joni, you know, joining the party, this organization for twenty years. And she is retiring to Florida. And she's gonna be greatly missed by, by all of the. Current advocates, former advocates, the current board directors, past board directors, and the communities.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry, we just wanted to short on time, but this council had, uh, any question?
To Joni.
Thank you, do it.
Where do you place the note or is that just?
So are, we are restricted by, um, so we get DV, uh, domestic violence program, gives us money to help victims. Um, TC, uh, Department of Civil Justice is domestic violence and some sex assault. So we do have a lot of restricted funding. Um, we, we are more limited on our unrestricted, which is going to be smaller brands that we've got. Um, DOLA is a little bit less restricted, um, bail is still kind of happening now. So we are just unfortunately.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you all, everybody.
Hey, last, uh, uh, we have above ground fuel storage. And, uh, I wanna thank those in the audience for the patience. Uh, but, uh, you know, this is something that I think would be a tremendous benefit if we adopt, uh, above ground fuel tanks. And, uh, we're, we're not only fixing this, it's something that the studio would like to see. We, we fix it for, you know, everyone in the future. Because I, I think there are some significant advantages with above ground fuel tanks. Uh, one near and dear to our heart would be, of course, uh, by groundwater contamination, just as an example. But, uh, Jonson?
Yeah, Mary Council, Carmen's here as well, and she wrote this memo that you got in your thing, or in your packet. In your packet. But generally speaking, we think that, that, we think that we can still make sure that we protect our community. And provide for these options which are more cost effective and like Mary said, better for some environmental reasons than what we're currently doing. Um, and so what we're basically doing here is just suggesting that we take out this prohibition. And then we, we continue to hold applicants to the standards that are in the building code, the fire code and all of that. Carmen, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Uh, no, I don't think so, that's, that's well stated.
Still have an audio phone?
I thought, I had. Carmen, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me, John?
No, this, this is a mix of two codes. Yeah.
You can't, you're.
This was, you look at the code. If you hit the liquor, then it, yeah, goes for highly final, these are the ones that are what it is. You have the accident, the explosive witness, the above ground, above the lake storage. It's a, it's a mix of two codes, but that is. The unique code. So that's Mary's law.
Yeah.
It's no matter which, how far back from the original code. Well, it's never, it's, it's essentially, it goes back to unit N F P four ninety five. It's, it's above ground storage storage, it's much restricted because of blast rates. And that not incorporating into the law.
And, and that could be honestly, but then there's.
We're using by other end of the law. Doesn't need the standard.
Okay.
Ever that's.
It was just not something that we had especially.
Those kind of old farm, farm type stuff.
Well, not only that.
Far stuff, it's just, look at the, the I F B store. This is the explosive code, you see, literally.
Right.
They're not the same.
Right.
In any way should perform and you flip the last one through the other bits. So fixing this is more of a, just make it match, whether it's I S C twenty eight, if it's written about the code, it makes sense.
It's just verdicts.
Or if you go into twenty twenty one code, it doesn't, it doesn't change all it is by presentations.
I mean, Jerry, I would refer to you on this one. Because I think you would know, just, you know, what the words.
It's kind of interesting they got in there, I don't.
Like I said, it could have been in there for three years.
Oh, it probably was, if you look back historically, um, it probably been there longer than that.
Yeah, because I, I have to say to the council, I mean, but, any, I don't remember.
Figure of storage that are to be.
We would have just, we would have just shut it down and said no.
But the four ninety five is referencing the I S C section and all of them is back and it's. Unit twenty eight, this is abbreviated verdicts, you say. It covers every concern that ever come up with the above ground storage. But it's involved or, or still think it's secondary to the, oh.
That's why you told it.
The comment into.
It is. The only thing I would say is, um, I would remove the, so we quote by fence wall.
It's just gotta be one and a half times of its. Containment.
That, that's right, is that for every one and a half times.
Above ground first, even font vault.
Right, right.
You're gonna fracture the font vault, this is fire was, it's kind of productive, secondary containment. You know, when you see that file vault, you know, file vault is included, that's where it's still, you know, probably more of it.
Right.
We don't currently make people put fences around.
The ground that's.
So why are you gonna do it on a, most ways to still.
Jeremy, that, that is an excellent point.
Yeah, because you go.
Thousand gallons.
Right. Exactly, that's, that's.
Yeah, your followers is what gives, gives, gives impact and all of that, so secondary containment has to be. Double, double, with, with one and a half dollars, a few times, the law would have to probably, all of them. But you have, it's impacted. The whole, when she put a fence next to it, she didn't see it. We actually had fire load next to something, sitting that fire load by code. Her, her fence by code, we can do with your exposure.
Right.
Right, so now we have forty foot fence.
Right.
Which is a undue burden on people putting in on, like font vault, for example.
Counterproductive.
Totally counterproductive. So it's kind of a clean up, we're cleaning up the code. My perspective on code, perspective, we clean up the code entirely, we have requirement. And just say it must be the currently adopted fire code, uh, in its entirety. Aggregates, which covers every conceivable way to someone move up. It cleansed up where everybody moving forward, so it's.
Name.
Office, if anybody's need to go.
Sure, process, process wise, I would, I would just submit that to. Back to the, for me, that.
Right. And all, and as far as authority wise, all I would do, in that perspective, is I would pull up a playbook. Look at the plan and I would make a bunch of marks and make sure that everything that I'm looking for is on that. And that's where if you start putting a fence around and other stuff, actually it's gonna slow that process down because I wouldn't do that. But it doesn't do the other part of the code.
There's side restrictions, that's.
Yeah, if you get into the actual fire code, deep into there's, uh, there's side restrictions. Uh, how much volume you store, how much volume you store next. How much gas and decent before that, I don't think we, I don't know, you know, school for you enough to. Within that range, that's like, you get a gas station, you wanna go above ground then. There are.
We have five, five hundred gallons.
Separations. And that's all. You get above insurance, I did that phone, phone engagement.
We lie.
Games for them, uh, certainly. There's some one stop, doesn't it do it for you? It's pretty clean when you get to give it. You don't have to have a spill kit, you just have to report all spills to the authority, local authority. It's not really restricted. It's not really restricted, it's kind of any of your best practice, but. If you get, this is pretty short, if you get in the actual fire season, the section for this is. While will be twenty five pages, six of those are part of.
Wow.
Um, of this, this is inside this. Um, this is abbreviated state working with is pretty clean. If you get a bond vault, it makes this department, that's invented this way, it's, it's simple.
Well, Scott, you know that too from Tennessee. Yeah, crazy about the bikes, what they require and stuff, I mean.
Oh, oh, that's.
Et cetera.
You get into an MSHA requirement.
Here in MSHA, yeah.
Most fire codes were.
Yeah.
Separations.
Yeah, that's insane.
Yeah.
I think we can do this, in my opinion, in both, which is definitely probably better for anybody in the future who wants to put a above ground tank. So, to Mayor's point, should be considered, right?
Yeah.
We should make that the preferred choice, which is below ground tank.
Yes. I was gonna say, Carmen's having some problems getting her microphone to work right now, but we can take that, we can modify it based on what you said. I mean, the next step would be ordnance, that would just go through this, that's a normal order process. But we can probably bring that up the next meeting.
Right.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Johnny, for the knowledge and all that, man. Jeremy, uh, well done, thank, thank you. Anything, uh, further that we need, uh, direction on?
Uh, I don't think so, if council's comfortable with its directions, don't say we'll bring ordinance back. And, uh, it does not pull up any plans now for above ground tanks, that's intense that council was.
Yeah.
The above ground tanks continue, uh, through the process.
All right, all right, well, thank you very much. Uh, we will take a short break and, uh, we can be here just a couple minutes after seven.